We call this May 5th, Detective County Commission Meeting to order. Have a roll call.
District one, Mr. Guzzi.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bellin.
Present.
District three, Mr. Miller.
Present.
District four, Mr. Levin.
Present.
Four, Mr. President, so we can't conduct business. Have your invocation by Mr. Porter and our plan by Mr. Miller.
Lord God, our Father, we're blessed today. We're blessed to be here and enjoy this weather that you've provided for us, the spring rain, the spring sunshine, it's so wonderful. We thank you for the revitalization of the earth, also our spirit at the same time. We thank you for that. We thank you to these men that represent us in Jackson County. We thank you for them and their families. We pray that you'll always be with them, be with those that are representing us all over this United States and this state. We thank you for those that choose to represent us and to serve in public office, those employees in public office. So, God, we thank you for them. We're also very mindful today and thankful that the United States Supreme Court has issued an opinion today that approves of public prayer and legislative function. So, God, we thank you for that and we thank you for the men and women that voted for that opinion, so that we can continue to pray and to offer thanks to you. So, God, continue to watch over us and bless us every day, in Christ's name, amen.
A vertical flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have finished both April 7th and April 14th meetings. Have a motion to approve those, the minutes either separately or together. Motion to approve both together. Okay, we have a vote, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Next item is approving our agenda for the meeting. We have five items this evening. And one item that seems to be missing regarding the water project. I'd like to add item number six regarding the water project on County Road 33. Any other changes before we proceed? Have a motion to approve the agenda with that item added.
So move.
Motion, we have a second. Okay, motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Have no award for presentation, but we've had one individual sign up to speak this evening. Mr. Robert Uschur.
Yes. I would like to address County Commission and thank you for letting me speak. I live in Dueska and County Road 61 is kind of an issue for many people up there. One problem is if that road gets closed, the traffic that comes into the school during school opening and school closing hours will block up all around through the central Piska and it will not let emergency vehicles go through if that is the case. Furthermore, I've, in a way, I'm glad that voting hasn't happened yet. One reason I would think is a sign from above that it needs to be thought over more closely. The way that, I don't know how many people have spoken about it before, this is the first time I'm here, and one thing is light up there on County Road 61 would be the most effective way to slow traffic down when the children are crossing the road, which shouldn't actually really happen during school time because the kids are in school, in their classes, and there's not much going on on the opposite side of the road, whereas the teachers should be able to take care, watch the children when they're crossing the road. So, I would like to address the commission and to think that through, relive in the through what damage it would cause to Piska, to the town itself.
Play, sure. Have no old business, so we'll move on to our new business. First item regarding vacancy for the Jackson County County Attorney Board. We've had three individuals that have requested to serve on this board, that fulfill the unexpired term, and the term will end on September 30th, 2017. You have a name for those three individuals, so at this time we'll entertain nomination for this board either from those individuals or otherwise.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Ms. Bonner.
Have a nomination for this Ms. Bonner. Do we have any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dr. Paul McGee.
Nomination for Dr. McGee. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, having now closed the nomination process, and we have one vacancy, we have two nominations, so we'll take this one at a time by last name. So, the first one will be for Ms. Jane Bonner. If you could do a roll call vote, which district, Mr. Leonard, it'll ought to be a yes or a no for this term.
District one, Mr. Bonner.
Yes.
District two, Mr. Bonner.
Yes.
District three, Mrs. Bonner.
No.
And district four, Mrs. Bonner.
Yes.
So, we have three affirmatives. That carries the nominations, so we'll go no further. So, Bonner will fill that vacant seat. Next item, motion to approve an immediate contract with Southern Health Partners. This contract we received, I think, right at the end of February. Contract period actually is March 1st to December 28th. I believe this is, so annual.
It is, I've reviewed it.
So, this is the first time, I think, this is coming for us, so is there, are there any questions or comments on this? This is an agreement that we agreed to annually as I mentioned.
Right.
And they handle work of the bill and make medical leave.
Sure. It is not.
This is a budget.
Yes, it is.
The sheriff's budget.
Right. Sheriff did send this to us, so he's on board with the team. I'd asked him about it, he said that he has no problems if we hadn't informed him.
Just to note, I think this is the first increase in several years. I don't think they've had an increase, it's 2% increase, but they haven't had an increase in less than three years.
You do not like them changing the whole policy, correct?
I do not.
We'll just, we'll just type increase and keep it on the script. What it was.
Any other questions or comments? This is the refreshment, so replace them. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so to have a motion to approve the renewal of this contract.
I get motion.
Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Say a motion, say, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve closing enforcement of County Road 61 in Dueska. Obviously, this is something that we've discussed several times, we've had several meetings and discussions over. As it stands now, if we are to approve this tonight, I think, based on the discussion at the several meetings, it would be on the condition that the school system pay for the renovations to Thompson Street, and it would be necessary in order to have traffic flow as freely as possible. And I think we would continue to maintain County Road 61 as well as the whole portion, so we basically would be taking over Thompson Street and giving up this portion of County Road 61. So, before we proceed, are there any other questions or comments on that?
Does the town agree to the release of Thompson Street?
We will need to submit a request, and this motion will need to include that. I guess we can, tell me if we can do that. We didn't include everything in the one motion, but it will be an official request for them to vacate Thompson Street to us, so that we can pay them for it. And yes, they did speak with us, speak about that at their most recent council meeting. Of course, they can't vote on it until they get our request, but it's my understanding that they are willing to do that.
And we'll continue to maintain it from the point of school parking lot, back up for the whole town.
That was, that was a request of the town due to the biggest thing would be the address changes if we didn't.
I might motion to town supports it and is willing to allocate the Thompson Street and school or place any hard cost involved in my motion to close the County Road 61.
So, we have a motion to close that with the conditions that the school pay those costs and the request to the town of Dueska that they, they get that to us, correct? Have that motion, we have a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this?
I would just, I think if those two conditions, this will be effective upon that occurring.
Upon agreements with both of those.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve the development of county website. This was presented to you in the previous work session. You have, the proposal basically outlines the hours necessary, the quoted price is listed there. It's a small project, but I think it's a necessary project to kind of bring us up to date, try to present ourselves as far as the assisted industrial development of the state in the last year. So, before any further discussion, we have a motion to approve this proposal, we'll Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this? Again, working with them immediately, if you have any ideas, please email those to us, so that we can get those, we can work it over the next several months to get this laid out and get something prepared together, so it'd be good thing. Okay, so motion is second, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Next item, motion to declare the annex building a surplus. We have removed pretty much all of the desk and furniture, voting supplies, all those types of items out of the annex building at this time, so what remains is basically the building itself and in it some wiring and some of the structure that exists. We've had some requests from folks to be able to, I guess, scrap some portions of that, and in order to do that, it's my understanding that we would need to declare the building as well, so that we can dispose of that in that way, and then anything that's left, we will have that building cordoned out and cleaned up from that point. I think that was the determination from the, from the, that would be the best way to proceed.
Would be, open our shelves up to me a lot, they'll be pretty wet. I guess I'm pretty wet, yeah.
They'll need to sign the waiver before they enter. And the reason for declaring a surplus is because once it's torn down, it wants to torn out, it's not a permanent property, so we declared that surplus, and that's the only way I knew to allow that to occur.
There may not be, as I said, there were some questions on it, so in order to cover ourselves, we want to do this, and yes, we would provide that waiver, so that.
Will you let the scrapping to the town before you, it's not yet put like a roof or something, kind of scrap or anything?
No, no, I don't think that anyone, I honestly don't think that anyone would come in and want to be on it, based on what we've looked at. We tried to go in there ourselves and try to remove some stuff, and it's actually a lot more difficult than expected, so I don't think we would be able to find someone that would want to come in and do that. So, basically, it would be the things that are out and available, if anyone did want to take the scrap of what's out there.
Has the utilities been cut off in this place?
Yes, I have the, all the utilities have been, I heard taken out. I think the water's the only thing we need to still put a line on, the power and the gas. And if we vote on this tonight, of course, we'll still have to vote, I guess, to destroy the building at some point.
Include that as part of this clearing surplus and.
Okay, so we want to include that, and if we're ready to move forward in that direction, this is the end, if we move forward in that direction, we'll do that as well. So, any questions or comments on this?
I would like to include, perhaps, if you're ready, but if you have time, we might not spend six months taking loads of time.
Right. Yeah, we could set maybe 30 days for anyone.
So, a date for demo, and then, you know, if it's not done, I think.
Maybe 30 days prior to demo, we'll have to work with our public works folks to determine what the demo date would be.
I just didn't want, I just didn't want the building to be left to model.
Any other questions or comments? So, do we have a motion to declare the surplus as well as approve it for demolition? Of course, anything surplus would leave it at 30 days prior to whatever that demolition date is determined.
So move.
Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. The final items regarding County Road 33 water project, it would be good if we could make a decision tonight. Mr. Hill is here, yes, with us this evening. The water project was approved for $410,000, is that correct, what the grant was approved for? And it did come in overbid. The water authority is now requesting or looking for possible means to help fund the additional part of this water project. It would be recommended that we try to make a decision tonight on what we would like to, if any, we would like to assist and cover the remaining costs of the water project, as they will have to come up with those final costs before next Monday night. As far as funding next Monday night is when we'll actually approve the bid, is that correct? So, they'll need to know if they need to cut this project back, or if we're going to assist in funding any of this. So, we'll open this up for discussions if this is the first time it's come to, on media. We have questions or comments on this? I believe the total amount, total amount that is difference is $60,000. Of course, if they have to cut that, cut off a few homes from the project.
Mr. Hill, how many businesses do you receive? Michelle, you also reiterated to me that this project will save folks that have no access to public water.
That is correct.
I have one question. If the $30,000 short was it, how many homes would it affect?
I'm not sure, but what we'll have to do is see how far to cut back the project to take that much out, take that amount out. So, I can't answer that for you until we start marking it up the map.
But any cuts will, will make some folks not get the water, you're not just extending it out for the future, you're trying to get to these houses.
That is correct.
If we do the, be it as it's set up now, if we catch everybody in that immediate area, I mean, like I know, water comes around on 42 there, and then section 33, will it catch everybody there?
It will, as far as the original plans were drawn, yes.
There's, from what I saw, we looked at the plans last week, unfortunately, I guess, like anything else, the cost of these projects is expensive, and for what you get, there are several homes still in the area that will be without water, from what it looked like on the map. Of course, this is taking it, you know, every, every time we do one of these, it's a step further in that process, so, like I said, it looked like, based on the map, all that were initially included will be there, but there will be several still left out because obviously you just can't afford to do it with the rent here. Anything that we, based on the plans we've looked at, we will lose a few homes if we do cut back on the cost, but you'll also lose, I guess, where, you know, the goal is to get water out there, all together for the future. This kind of preps it for that also, in addition to getting this all right. Any other questions?
This will come out of which fund?
Anything that we choose to appropriate, I would recommend that we do it out of Fund This would be the capital, that's the most restricted funds, and that way you've got some of 112 that we can utilize for other projects.
I'll make the motion to supplement the grant.
For the full $60,000?
Water plays high, we can play high.
We can, we can vote whatever, and then they'll come up with the grants. Or try to, I would imagine you're going to try to come up with.
We'll try to before we're good.
Okay, we have a motion for, to approve the $30,000, the half third, if we have a second. Any further discussion? And that is providing, well, I guess that's regardless of whether they come up with the other third, we'll still try to get that portion of the project in.
If they don't come up with the other third, it will at least get delayed, if they come back to us, if they stop cutting any time on this project?
We have to approve the grant next week, so I would imagine if they don't come up with the other third, we'll know by the end of this week, right?
You'll know by then, correct?
Yes.
When we approve the project, you know, we'll know.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Okay, that concludes our agenda, and we'll do our comments for commissioners on the next item, the work session. So, at this time, to enter into the work session, we'll make a motion if we adjourn our meeting that was scheduled for last week, we're actually having to have tonight, have a motion to adjourn the meeting and enter into the work session. Motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. So, we'll move right into the work session, and we'll dispense with the formalities. I will, we'll ask for another roll call, please.
District one, Mr. Bellin, or Mr. Guzzi.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bellin.
Present.
District three, Mr. Bellin.
Present.
District four, Mr. Levin.
Present.
Four, present, and no additional awards and presentations, no additional individual sign up to speak, now our discussion items to go over. First item being HVAC quote, we have worked in the past on a, a, where I look for, an agreement with several companies to do our maintenance for our HVAC systems, and we suspected, and Mr. Guzzi helped look at this quite a bit, that we're paying more than was necessary for what was needed to be done. So, what I have before you is actually not an agreement for annual contract, but for spring service maintenance, we're running a little bit late on that, but this is the cost of this spring service maintenance, and it outlines all the different items that will be included in that. I think after talking, we're still about to determine in the future if we want to move forward with a contract, but for the time being, it may be most beneficial for us to do this, and actually, we're paying $60,000 a year if spring/winter maintenance costs about the same, is that something, do spring/winter maintenance usually cost about the same? So, if they do cost about the same, we're going to save around $40,000 a year on this portion of the lease. So, I wanted to get this to everybody, take a look at it, if there are any questions or comments on it, and move forward if it's in the future as necessary.
Do you recommend this, Mr. Guzzi?
And being in the public works bit loss, my understanding, of course, we are keeping up with all our costs, and we're keeping up with all our costs on HVAC systems this year, but also, can you have any questions or comments? If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for next week, and we can discuss further there, or move to proceed if we wish to. Okay, next item regarding the budget business, Mr. Bellin. I think everybody had received in their boxes today, we have that with you, information on the budget.
Everybody should have sheeted, two sheets stapled together. We're looking, first section of 101, revenue 112, we just added that revenue item there for $16,000 that we overlooked in your official budget, so we're actually increasing our revenue by $16,000 for that line out. And in the second column there, under the general funds, 001, when they allocated the workers' comp distribution for beginning of the budget year, we just lumped everything under one line out, as you will see on the left-hand column, under 001, 511, 130, 125. All we're doing is distributing that out to the different departments, so there's no change in the budget at all, it's just allocating the profit percentages to the departments. And then the third item there under the 199 fund, where we did not budget for any fuel under that line out, and we are putting $6,000 expenditure into that line out. So, on page one, the only thing that affects the, the first and the last ones, again, the only thing that affects the bottom line out of our budget, because we're increasing revenue by 16, and we're increasing expenditures by 6.
Any questions on that?
If you'll notice there also on the, that middle section, 192,000, that was budgeted originally, because I did have a breakdown of the different departments, so Mr. Manning has gone back and broken that down, and we have actually charged the different departments, so that's why you see within the general fund, that's how much was budgeted, you see that breakdown now in the general fund, where they need to be to ensure that we can budget more accurately for the future.
The budget change, though, we're increasing revenue by $16,000.
Right.
We're increasing expenditure by 6.
Right.
Would that not be just $10,000 difference?
It is, yeah. And the second section there doesn't, doesn't have any change in it at all, but overall, it is a $10,000 improvement to the budget.
So, these, we need to look at this, the way we approve this budget management, we'll talk about that more in the budget here.
Right. And if you flip over to page, the second page, this particular section here, on the general fund, the 001 expenditure accounts, and the 511 funds midway down the page, and the 525 fund down at the bottom, we're not changing any budget numbers, we're just moving some object codes from some 500 accounts into some 200 accounts. The reason for that, the 500 accounts are mainly for capital-type expenditure, fixed assets, so, after, there is no change to the budget, it's just a correction of DJ codes. We'll have a count, please.
Questions or comments on that? We'll, again, we need to discuss how we want to proceed, but we'll have a current budget, we can go ahead and have a current budget, and make a meeting and approve those changes, but. of that. All right, we'll go on to our reports, do you have any deals, Mr. Mill? Mr. Watson?
I don't remember anything.
Mr. Bonner?
You have one? I just might give you about that, I'm sure, going due to that part of it, it's opened up, it's open for over a month now. Okay, every time I open, I have these, now, I think, I wouldn't have moved it seven days, but that's Catfish Festival, so I don't need Catfish going in now, so I'm going to start cleaning on that front. So, we should wind it up around 24, so, for that month, I have to schedule, I don't see any force any fishing. And also, Catfish Festival, we're on the 17th, and I do have a booth there to come, fishing for the art people, it's 16th Friday, starts at 10:00. And the new watercraft, the plate tap and store that we have down there, it's been great, it's been good. I'm curious, if you ever want to come down and look at it, see what's set up and down, I hope it's going to continue to be good in the ground.
How many additional species do we, or 130?
Those eight that I was talking in the back, it's going to be a while, I probably haven't owned them in two months. But also, we had to bring back the silver line a little bit, and the way we done it, we could add three more, another spot, so, and all we made is right around that, a few blocks, so those three, we're hoping, hopefully, when I get those up, the front five, about 24.
Anything else? Thanks, sir. Mr. Millie?
Good luck to you, Mr. Millie.
Thank you, sir. We do have a vacancy coming up, I believe that appointment comes up in June, so we will announce, anyone interested in sitting on that board, thanks, sir, anyone interested to sit on that board will need to have their application in by the end of May.
Who's currently?
I believe that's Mr. Green. Anything?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Lethem?
Present.
And that concludes our business this evening. We will continue with a budget hearing downstairs, we have a few items to talk about, so with that, we'll entertain a motion to recess downstairs for that budget meeting. Motion, we have a second, please. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.